And I know there are individuals outside, so I'm hoping that they can hear me. There's anyone out there that has, wants to address another item? If not, we're going to move forward then. You will be given 30 minutes for those who wish to speak in favor of the rescinding of the proclamation. And as a reminder, you will be given three minutes. Who wishes to come forward?
Mayor Garola and council members, the council chambers have filled to overflowing twice in the past few weeks. Tonight, as we just witnessed, everybody's here to talk about the proclamation. The Recorder has published many letters to the editor, several editorials by Rick Elkins, and at least three front-page stories in the same time. K-Tip has discussed it on their morning show six or seven times and used it as a lead story. At least two television stations have run stories on this issue. Between all this coverage, between all the letters and email, the word on the street, the blogs, can we finally realize that this little proclamation is important to people in this community? And, in fact, important to people way beyond this community as witnessed here this evening. Yeah, they were just words, just words that were spoken, just words that were written down and typed on a piece of paper. But so were the Magna Carta, so were the Declaration of Independence, so were the Sermon on the Mount, just words. But words mean things. And I'm getting kind of tired of being told, on one hand, "It's only a proclamation, just let it go," and on the other hand, how vitally important it is that we make this kind of statement, which will somehow keep kids from hurting themselves, make the community a more inviting and nurturing place to live, and my favorite, bring us into the 21st century. The proclamation was important. It was so important that it divided this council, and may have been the impetus, we'll find out tonight or next couple of weeks, it may have been the impetus for revising the way we do proclamations. It probably does need revision, in any case, because it was done in violation of the city's own charter. The proclamation bears the common and the official seal of the city of Porterville. Documents bearing these seals must have the approval of the majority of the council according to the charter of the city of Porterville. Is that a big deal? Not really. Has it ever been a big deal? No, because historically, proclamations have been made to recognize contributions made by community organizations and community leaders. Nobody in the past has had a political agenda or tried to do social engineering through the issuing of proclamations. Because that's happened, it's going to ruin the innocence of an otherwise great process and invite criticism and new constraint. So it is a big deal, because it's part of a greater social agenda that's trying to corrode the very foundations of this society. Don't believe for a minute that this stops with a simple proclamation. I want to again note that there is no hatred, no ill feelings against homosexual individuals. It is not about them, it's about government intrusion into our private lives and a smothering attitude of political correctness. I'm asking you to rescind the proclamation, and please, don't make this mistake again. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we're not going to have, we will not, we will not have the clapping. We are in council chambers.
No, we're in the People's Chamber.
Well, we're in the People's Chambers, but we do need to continue forward.
Let's not ever forget that.
Mayor Garola and council members, I'm C.C. Townsend. We have Townsend Architectural Group here in Porterville. The proclamation was granted under the banner of fairness. On the front page of the Porterville Recorder today, the LGBTs launched a new group entitled "Porterville Equality and Fairness for All," or P-E-F-A. I am also in favor of fairness for all. Since we are all in agreement, if the mayor's proclamation is not rescinded, if the mayor's proclamation is not rescinded, then under the banner of fairness and equality, I, as a heterosexual, would like a proclamation for July celebrating heterosexual pride. I can point to numerous contributions by heterosexuals, such as the founding of our country, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, just to name a few. Likewise, so there is no discrimination, I vote August to be Christian Heterosexual Pride Month. The Christians' contributions to this country, along with the heterosexual contributions, would be things such as the founding of major universities, such as Harvard and Yale, the emancipation of black slaves, our major hospitals, orphanages, groups like Right to Life who saved the lives of babies, and so on. Just so we don't leave anyone out, for those who like multiple sex partners, September should be Polygamy Pride Month. There are also those who enjoy sex with animals, bestiality. What about pedophilia? There are minors who enjoy sex with adults. And I guarantee you, if we continue on this slippery slope, pedophilia will be legalized.
Please, can I have, she's speaking.
Ridiculous, isn't it? Very ridiculous. By the way, the stats, the statistics on the proclamation pertaining to the risk of suicide do not agree with the National Institute of Mental Health. In closing, I quote again from Thomas More, Lord Chancellor of England, "When a statesman or a councilman or mayor forsakes his own private conscience for the sake of his public duty, he leads his people on a short route to chaos." A short route to chaos. A too weak route to chaos. I urge Mayor Garola and this council to rescind this proclamation and to make the necessary changes so the mayor can have council member support on future proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Adams, Springville, Mayor Garola, council members. I believe that elected members of the government should listen to the voters who elected them. This is a democratic country, and thus, majority rules. If another city or country chooses to follow certain trends, so be it. I deliberately moved to this small town to raise my children in a small-town environment with small-town values. Had I wanted my children to grow up with the latest New Age ideas and ideals, I would have lived elsewhere. That's the beauty of our country. You can live and work anywhere and freely move from one place to another without restrictions. Please rescind the June proclamation or replace it with one more representative of the citizens of this town who elected you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rodney Martin. I'm a resident of Porterville. My address is on record. Mayor Garola and members of council, I wish to voice my support for rescinding the June 4th proclamation proclaiming June as Gay Pride Month in Porterville. No alternative proclamation is necessary. Just because Visalia does something doesn't mean Porterville has to. The proclamation should be rescinded because it is inconsistent with the values of the Porterville community and because it is morally and intellectually dishonest. In reviewing the proclamation, the first three "whereas's" purport to be the premise of the proclamation for declaring the month of June as Gay Pride Month. The premise stated in the first three "whereas's" is that the LGBT community, holding their own dinners, and I must ask, if the LGBT individuals seek equality, then why do they hold themselves out as a separate community and seek special distinction over and above the Porterville community as a whole? Holding their own dinners is hardly a broad service to the community. I've never seen one of these LGBT communities open to the community nor advertised in the Porterville Recorder. Perhaps I'm wrong about that. And let's be clear, the very term LGBT identifies one with sex acts. Thus, under the logic, everyone need not identify as African-American, or Hispanic-American, or Native American, or Caucasian, but one should identify by the sex one engages in. What is happening with these types of proclamations made on June 4th by the mayor and by the type of public policies being made with regard to sexual accommodation is state-sponsored insanity and the destruction of Western Christian society. What next? Will NAMBLA come into these chambers and present the council with a proclamation opining at the injustices of bullying that their class faces? Returning to the "whereas's" in the proclamation, the remaining four "whereas's" shift and dwell into anti-bullying and teenage suicide, something that is truly tragic, regardless of sexual orientation. The four "whereas's" are completely unrelated and have no basis to the suggested premise, thus, the proclamation is an illogical amalgamation of emotional logic designed to throw a bunch of feel-good words into a proclamation and to fraudulently fuse the gay agenda with an unrelated issue. The use of anti-bullying as a vehicle to proclaim Gay Pride Month is shameful. Madam Mayor, with all due respect, you've taken an Orwellian position that basically says that some in our community warrant more equality than others. A homosexual student is no more important than a heterosexual student. All are equal before the law. I urge you to rescind this resolution. When you strip away all the illogical rhetoric, the Gay Pride Proclamation seeks to recognize as a class groups of persons based solely on their sexual acts with members of the same sex. This is not hate, this is irrefutable fact.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, my name is Sidney Pedrosa. My address is on record. And I'm just going to speak, you know, impromptu here, I don't have any notes, but I do want to say that, you know, the matter that was considered a few weeks ago, I don't know if it was a couple of weeks ago, did bring to light some things that I never thought would be happening in our city. I want to say upfront that I am a committed Christian, I'm a follower of Jesus Christ, and even despite that, I'm not a hater of people who are not Christians, who have a different perspective. I want to be upfront also to say that, had you made a proclamation for heterosexual marriages contribution, I would have opposed that as a Christian, because those kind of morality issues have no place in these halls, you know, that we call City Council. And again, I just want to say that upfront. I think probably the thing that stands out the most for me is that, you know, as I observed, you know, the meeting a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whatever it was, was that it just divided the room, you know? Even as people would come forward to speak, you know, you would have the side that would clap in support, and you would have the side that would boo, you know, in opposition. And I said to myself, wow, you know, what have we become? What have we turned into? You know, this is not the way to conduct city business. The other thing that kind of stood out to me about the meeting that we had last time that we were here was that it was just one person making the proclamation and that there was no support from the rest of the council. Book of Proverbs has a verse that says, "There is wisdom in the counsel of many." I do not know if you counsel with your colleague, you know, fellow council people or not, but sometimes when we're too close to something, we're unable to see things for what they are. What I see that's going on in this day is that we have a battle for truth, a battle for truth versus lies. And, I mean, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, even a little child, a boy, a girl, can tell that there's a difference just in the way their bodies are constituted. So I just, you know, would request this evening that, if it would be possible, that you would please reconsider the situation that has been brought forth, you know, to this city of ours, and that you would just say, you know what, we don't need to bring issues of sexual lifestyle, sexual behavior as part of the proclamation. Again, I don't have any hatred to people who think different than I do, and I would like for them to think like I do, but I give space, you know, for different positions, for different opinions. And I just do want to say something, because it was real interesting that I heard something on the radio this morning, and when it comes to issues of morality, there is no such thing as middle ground, there is no such thing as neutrality. Even, you know, certain radio celebrities said, you know, "I'm neutral about this," but yet, it seemed like, you know, that we can't take that position. I just want to thank you for hearing me out, and I would just hope that there would be some process placed, that when it comes to proclamations, that we would not have sexual behaviors be part of that. Thank you for the time that I was allowed to speak.
Thank you.
My name is Henry Aguilar, and I've been a resident in this area now for 12 years. And myself, also, didn't ever think I'd be standing here talking against a proclamation on Gay Day. I was really impressed, I've got to say, that when I came in and I seen that in God we trust, and that we have that seal right over the Porterville, and the fact that we recognized God when we started this meeting, that there was a prayer that was said. And I understand, as the brother was just talking, as he came up here, that, yes, we are to love everybody, that we are on equal ground with everybody, because God says that to love the people. But we also know that there's a standard. If there wasn't a standard, we wouldn't have jails. We jail people because of the fact that there's evil in this world. And the Lord says, "This act is a detestable act. It's not of God." And, you know, as a council member, you, as leaders, will be accountable to God. And remember that you have been established by God in your position. The Scriptures is very clear about that. You will be held accountable, you will answer to God for what you vote on and what you do. And if you believe there's a God, then you better know that you're going to be held accountable for going against Him. So with that, I'd just like to leave that, because you're in a leadership position, and it's on you guys to make sure that you do what is right, because that's what the Scriptures talk about, do what is right. It's not that we hate anybody, because, again, it says, "Love all people, hate the sin, but love the people." God bless.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to step forward? You want to come up here and stand? If you can let him through, please.
Oh, boy.
You can stay right there until she finishes.
Hi, my name's John McKee, and I live here in Porterville. Been here since 1966. I would like to know, when the people get up who speak the other side, I'd like to know what city they're from. Since this is Porterville, I would like, you know, Porterville people speaking out, not people from other places. I mean, they can speak out if they want to, that's their right, but I just, you know, it's important that Porterville be represented here. Being a Christian, I have no right to judge anybody else, but I truly do not think that we should have special days set aside for gays and lesbians. I mean, we don't have special days set aside for other people, I mean, it's just, I don't know. I don't know what all I'm going to say here.
You're doing fine, John.
And another thing, I get tired, and not just on this issue, but I really get tired of voting for things, and then the powers that be come in and take it all away. That's something that really upsets me. That's been going on for years. Like S.I. Hayek Highwell, my first time I ever voted. Let's not make a difference, I don't know, that's it. I'm a person of very few words, so that's it. Thank you very much, and I forgot to say I'm addressing the mayor and council. Okay.
That's okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject.
Hello, my name is Kenneth.
Whoa, I have the floor, and I'm going to speak to you.
Yes, council member.
Kenneth Avila, correct?
Hamilton.
Yes, sir.
We're not going to tolerate the talk that we heard from you last time. You may speak, but you may speak just as you've heard these others. We will stop you, we will not entertain any of the nastiness that comes out of your mouth most of the time. You understand the rules?
Understand, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Avila. I grew up here, 21 years before I moved to Sacramento. Now, as I was seeing these things take place, since I did get arrested for freedom of speech last week, I got to see it on the news channel, and I see Mayor Garola crying. You know, Esau cried. He tried to repent with tears. I'm here to say that God still will not forgive you. If you bring forth fruits worthy of repentance, not just rescinding this, because a teenager's responsibility is to clean his room. He doesn't get a trophy, he doesn't get a pat on the back or a handshake because he did what he's supposed to do. You made this mess, and you are supposed to clean it up. Don't expect no trophy or pat on the back from anyone in Porterville. If you want to really show fruits worthy of repentance, then go to the schools, make a proclamation saying, "Let's take this filth out of the schools."
Careful.
"Let's take it out of the schools. Let's publicly apologize. I'm not going to call you Mayor Garola, I'm going to call you Mayor Gayrola, because that name suits you."
Now, that, I will not accept. That is beyond. I ask for respect for this council. I expect that. I have never raised my voice in this chamber.
His time is over.
That's what I asked for. Your time is up. Thank you.
Repent.
Thank you.
The wrath of God.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Randy Minnick.
Go ahead.
This is my hometown.
Randy, pull your mic up a little.
I can do it. First off, thank you very much. Mayor Garola, I wrote a pretty stringent email to you, and I wanted you to know that though I was angry, that didn't violate my respect for you or your authority or your position. I hope you accept that. I disagree with you completely, and of course, I would like to express, I really would, that you would rescind this proclamation. When I grew up in this town, I was aware of homosexuals all through high school. I went to high school with a few gentlemen that were homosexuals. Nobody really cared. It was never a big deal. When I got out of high school, I went to work at the Porterville Developmental Center. There was one tech two there who was quite gay, quite homosexual, nobody cared. When I went to Porterville Junior College, there was at least one gentleman in our class that was homosexual, and nobody cared. And I think, talking to the people that I know now in my hometown, when it comes to the fact that there are gays and lesbians that live here, I really think that most people really just don't care. What I do think is they care about having an agenda forced down our throat. We don't want that. We don't want proclamations forced down our throat. We don't want anybody's agenda, right or left. We don't want people's agendas crowded upon us. We want to be the nice Central Valley small town that we grew up in. We don't need to be dragged into the likeness and image of, say, San Francisco or some other large city. We don't want that. We have peoples flocking here from all over the state to get away from these kind of things. So I would really like to express that, at least the people that I fellowship with and that I know, we don't care about the homosexuals, we don't care what they do, where they go. We don't hate anybody, we just want to be left alone. We want to have our own private community here, I should say, open community in our own beliefs, without people beating us up with their agendas and programs and such. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to let you know, we have about four minutes left. Please come forward.
Nestor Lamborina, I've been here in Porterville since 1972, pastor of church. I do a lot of recovery work, and I've had the opportunity to deal with, you know, men and women that have gone through different types of abuse and things that have taken place within their lives. I always look at them like, you know, they're human beings, they have feelings, they've been hurt. But I want the city of Porterville to know that, as a minister of the gospel, that I'm not ashamed of the gospel, because it is the power of God unto salvation, and everyone has a right to voice, to say what they want to say. And I believe that there's always going to be disagreements with what's taking place today. I know that we've been praying and we've been asking God's favor to give you wisdom, and like the gentleman said, I have the utmost respect for every one of you. And my hope is to see our community come to an agreement where people could get along and know that just because you're a believer or a Christian doesn't mean that you hate homosexuality or hate lesbians. There's nothing that I could do to change someone like that, and there's nothing that they could do to change me, to want me to go in that direction. That's their preference, but I just came as a concerned citizen of the city of Porterville, and I know that there's a desperate need for families that have the need to be worked with and help, and as long as I'm here, I'm going to do what I can to help them. And I wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hello, my name's Brian Johnson. I live at 109 North E in Porterville, California.
Raise your mic up.
Or just come a little closer.
There you go. Thank you.
I just want to say, I got a five-year-old kid starting school this year, and I raised him as a Christian. I don't want him knowing about it. I mean, you can't keep him from knowing about it, but I don't want him going to school and having Gay History Riots or Gay History Month, or whatever you guys are doing. I see in God we trust up there. I know God's getting pushed out of the government, but until people pull together and keep God in a picture, he's not going to be there. So I would really appreciate it if you'd rescind this thing, because if not, I'm moving out of Porterville, I'm not raising my son around it. And there's a lot of other people in town that feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yeah.
We'll give one more minute, because, actually, we only have a couple of minutes, and that's it.
Martin Kayyum-Gian, Porterville, California.
Go ahead.
I just want to voice my concern, Mayor and council, that as Mrs. Townsend suggested, that some of the statements she made, people sort of sneered and thought it was ridiculous, but there are groups in the Netherlands and in parts of the world that have already proposed these types of social arrangements. The one mentioning, there's one group in the Netherlands that wants to legalize incest. So these things are not ridiculous statements. I am a, now, as far as the rescinding of the previous proclamation, if we're going to discriminate on what proclamations come through, then there's a problem. I mean, if we're going to discriminate against some of the things that she had mentioned and suggested. So that was my first thought. I didn't necessarily think that rescinding the proclamation is going to do a whole lot just because it's like, "I object and strike that from the record, but it's already been said," type of thing. My concern is, as a father of three, I have a six-year-old, an eight-year-old, a 10-year-old, what is going to be the message that we send to our children? When governments, institutions make proclamations, they send a message unwittingly to our posterity, to our next generation. I love the homosexuals. One of my best friends that actually was the first one that had invited me to church and gave me my first Bible, five years later, came out and shared with me where he was. I spoke to him today. And so, as it says, I'm sorry, but my concern is that we just continue to seek the truth in love. And, but as Jesus told the woman that was caught in adultery, coincidentally, they didn't bring the man, they should have brought both, but He said to her, "Where are your accusers?" And she said, "There's no one." And when He said, "And neither do I, go and sin no more." So we should be able to speak that there's a better, there's a best way, and I believe it's a man and a woman in matrimony, and any other arrangement is second-best at best. I mean, it's not God's design. And what we must love are homosexual neighbors. They are my neighbors, and I must love them, and I must do more to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, we're going to take the last, this is the last one individual that will speak and then if you'll go ahead.
Hi. My name is Terry Jatton. I've lived here my whole life and I want to first of all, apologize. I saw the clip of the last meeting and was quite appalled by some of the hate speech that was given. And so I apologize to all of the gay community for, for that because that's not, in my opinion, going to get anything accomplished. I'm not here because I hate the gay community. Like the last gentleman said, I love everybody. That's what God says. But I believe also, again, I'm going to be, repeat what other people said, but I don't hate the gay community. However, I also oppose this, excuse me, am opposed to a society that throws the agenda in the faces of us who believe in our right not to accept it. I have as much right not to accept the gay agenda as the gay agenda does to reserve their rights. So I'm just asking that you please rethink this proclamation. Also, one of the, if I understood correctly, one of the points was bullying, how the gay children are being bullied. Bullies are everywhere. If I asked, if I asked everybody to raise their hands if they've ever been bullied, I could almost guarantee that at least eighty percent of this room has been a victim of bullying at some time. It is not only the gay community. And I just feel like, what are we teaching our children by giving them a special day? They want to be equal. Let us be equal. Let us all be equal. There isn't any reason that I see to put that particular category as something that should be, well, praised. I, I believe that, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. I just want to just say that, I just ask that you think twice. Oh, and I also wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to commend the rest of the, all of you who stood up for this and stood up for the fact that you didn't agree with it. And I just feel like we are so forced in a liberal world to think in a liberal way that many of us conservatives, I speak for myself, I don't speak for every conservative, are afraid to speak their mind. I used to be afraid to offend people by telling you that I, telling them that I didn't believe in this. And I'm tired of sitting and letting people convince me of something that I don't believe in. And I'm going to continue to stand up for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Five minutes.
Are you okay? Do you need a break or?
I'm fine.
Okay. Everybody's fine. Can I please have, thank you. We will, in opposition of rescinding, rescinding the proclamation, you will have three minutes. Please come forward.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Second. Before I start, well, you can go and start the clock, I would like to provide a petition and comments from change.org. I have over seven hundred and forty-five printed of eight hundred and fifty-one signatures that I've collected. Three hundred and four of those are currently Porterville residents, but like I said, we're still collecting and they're printing, so I'd like to present those to you guys.
City manager, please.
Thank you. I would also like to take note of all the people wearing the rainbow pins in the audience because we would like to show our visibility tonight. So I'd like to begin with, I feel there's a major misconception that to be gay means that we are bad people. This is unfortunate because if you really knew how many gay people you are around in your daily life and took the time to get to know us as humans, you would learn that we're just as boring as everybody else. We are your children, family members, your neighbors, your coworkers, your barbers, your bank tellers, your local law enforcement, your local healthcare professionals and your local print shop girl, which many of you know me and here to be. The list goes on and on. We are part of your everyday life. We face the same struggles every day, only amplified due to the discrimination and lack of understanding from our fellow residents. I feel there is a misconception that we are sexual deviants and not regular, boring, everyday people filling our hours with the same hustle and bustle as everyone else in this room. As a LGBTQ leader of this community, I'm the one who receives the phone calls from the youth right here in this very community telling me that they've been kicked out. I'm the one who's approached in the classrooms telling me that they're cutting because they're told they're bad. I'm the one who has lost a dear friend just this past year to suicide in the name of the almighty sin that is homosexuality. I'm the one spending countless hours repairing the damage of society, the damage our society inflicts, the very, same damage that keeps occurring in these very chambers in countless ways. I represent a large portion of volunteers here in the South Valley that too, spend countless hours repairing the damage and mending hearts of our people. So please do not tell me that I do not have a right to be honored and the very, and at very least be acknowledged for our contributions to this community. Reasons we need the LGBTQ population to be recognized and acknowledged here in our own hometown is because of the great oppression, struggles and homophobia we face on a daily basis. It is important because we are made to feel ashamed of who we are. It is important because we are picked on, bullied, publicly humiliated, physically and mentally assaulted and murdered because of who we are. It is important because we are disowned by our families and kicked out of homes and oftentimes we have nowhere else to go because of who we are. It is important we recognize the LGBTQ population in this community because we are important people too. And I'm going to have someone pick up where I left off.
Thank you. Please, again, we're not going to, please, please, I'm asking that we don't have that. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Nicole Salia. I'm from Springville and I am proud to be continuing Melissa's words here. It is important to keep this proclamation intact because of the weight it carries for us in this community as residents of Porterville in our own hometown. So I am up here once again as an out and proud lesbian, not only in hopes you'll halt these harmful actions immediately, but also in hopes that the people of this community who are afraid to simply be who they are, see me, all of us, standing before you today and feel a sense of hope and pride, that they know I am here to represent them today, to tell everyone here tonight that we are your family members, your coworkers, your neighbors, your teachers, your police officers, that we make an honest living, we pay our taxes, and most importantly, we vote. We deserve to be treated just as everyone else. It is important that you, as city councilmen, realize that you are setting forth a precedent of intolerance and disdain for the LGBTQ people of our community by your actions. Your actions are telling the residents of this great city that it is okay to treat us this way. As public figures, we look to you to make wise and sound judgment calls for our community. It is important that you remember that some of us cast the same ballots that we granted you that very seat you are sitting in tonight. I am here to tell you that your proposed resolution is a slap in the face to all of us. These actions are causing great harm to us, the people who call this home. This city council has done more harm than good to the Porterville gay community and I am so outraged that you are trying to take away something that means more to us than any of you sitting up there could possibly know. And this is my own, these are my own thoughts. I am here to speak for those who have been silenced. I'm here to speak for my students who are getting kicked out of their homes and bullied for being exactly who they are. I'm here for my friends and my family members who are part of the LGBTQ community and who do amazing things every day for our fellow humans. But most of all, I am here to represent love, diversity and justice. City council members, look at us. Look at all of us in here. We are your constituents and we will not be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Timothy Rich and I moved to Porterville in 1980 and I was raised here. I left the state for many years and when I came back to California, I was asked if I was moving back to Porterville. And I said, not on your life. The town is full of bigots. And I didn't come back. I moved to Visalia. And whether you rescind the proclamation or not, the attention has been brought to this issue that needs to be on it. I honor the mayor for having the courage to come forward and make the proclamation. And I ask the rest of the city council members to recognize that the attention that has been brought to this is the most important thing that could ever happen. Whether you rescind it or not, the attention has been brought. A conversation has begun. We are children of this community. We are parents in this community. Our grandparents, our aunts, our uncles, we are your neighbors and we're not going away. The council needs to recognize that whatever decision is made regarding this proclamation, people will know, people are watching Porterville right now. And the vast majority of people watching Porterville right now are looking to see you do the fair and equitable thing, to leave the proclamation in place, to recognize that giving a proclamation and taking it away is worse than never having given it at all. So I urge the council, when the decision is made, to stand on the side of fairness. Stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm a little too short for that. Hi, my name is Kelly Teeter. I request to have the items seventeen and eighteen pulled from the consent calendar for discussion. I was here for the proclamation to be given to the LGBT community on the fourth. And after leaving this room, I was both saddened as well as disgusted by the way that the people in this town conducted themselves. But later that night, I was sent a message from someone due to lack of acceptance from her family, had to stay in the closet. She said that she wanted to thank me for doing something that she always wanted to do, which was stand up for the LGBTQ community and to do what she always felt in her heart was right. In the message, she said she secretly felt like a second-class citizen in her own home because her parents thought that what she really was, wasn't normal. Never in my life have I ever been ashamed of being from this town, but on that day, I absolutely was. I was ashamed of how people conducted themselves and how you, Mayor, were treated by not only the people in the audience here, but as well as your fellow council members. Taking away Pride Month is both unfair as well as ridiculous. The mayor signed that proclamation to bring unity to this town, not to separate us. There has to be change. That's what everyone was fighting for in the fifties and sixties during the Civil Rights Movement and that's what we're fighting for now. Why set us back sixty years? Instead of separating us and spouting off wrong statistics, calling people pedophiles and abominations and perverts, open your hearts and do what God asked. Love thy neighbor. I don't remember reading in any Bible where it says to hate people and be mean, but I do remember reading that man will not be the one that judges what is holy. That's what, what God is supposed to be there for. So in this, I'm only going to say, these people could be your daughters, your sons, your sisters and your brothers. Would you really want your family to be treated this way? Because I don't think, I don't think you would. Because I know I wouldn't.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is John Coffey and I've lived in Porterville my entire life, so that's almost sixty-seven years. First, I hope that items seventeen and eighteen will be pulled from the consent part of the agenda and then defeated. Regarding item seventeen, the system now in place has been used since about nineteen twenty-six without problems until two weeks ago, when a proclamation, and that's in quotes, was requested that recognize the efforts of a disfavored minority within our city's population. Then, as my father would say, quote, "All hell broke loose," close quote. The system is not broken. Please don't try to fix it until it is. Regarding item number eighteen, please do not rescind the quote-unquote proclamation that was issued two weeks ago. As you know, but some may not, a quote-unquote proclamation has about as much power as telling somebody, quote, "Keep up the good work or job well done," close quote. A resolution, on the other hand, must be voted on by the, quote, "governing body," issuing it and stays in effect until it expires, usually by being accomplished or being repealed. This council has a history for at least the last five years for passing or attempting to pass anti-LGBTQ resolutions and interestingly enough, they have been pushed by the same person. If the council is truly interested in the population of Porterville coming together as a strong, united, diverse community, driving a huge wedge deep into its heart, is not the way to do it. When a vote is called for, defeat both of these extremely divisive items. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor Garola, council members, my name is Carrie Richardson. I'm a Porterville resident. I did not grow up here. And oddly enough, every time I tell people where I moved from or where I grew up and then I came here, I receive the, well, why? Why did you come to Porterville? And that must be very discouraging, not only to public leadership who hope to foster commerce and so on, but for those who live here. I want to have a sense of, if you will, pride in where they come from. I am here today to present to you a letter of support from out of town. There's here, they're here for the city manager, if you will. But also wanted, we were told to speak from our heart. And I wanted to say, if you do not choose to remove items seventeen and eighteen from the consent calendar, I look forward to meeting the fellow council members and the mayor on the turf of discussing that very issue. I have begun a survey of, well, I guess I should probably start with my credentials. I have a bachelor's in political science and a master's in public administration. And I've begun a survey of all of the towns that are plus or minus twenty thousand in our population and how they conduct themselves regarding proclamations and how that approval process proceeds. You'll be very disappointed to note that with three or four so far that I've found, all of them are approved by the city manager and then given to the mayor for approval. It's no need for the other council members to give input, to take the picture, to sign the proclamation or any of that ceremony. It is solely an honor bestowed by the mayor. And I urge the mayor to stand strong, to remain brave and continue her support for the entire community of Porterville and show that moving to Porterville, living in Porterville, is something to be proud of, something to smile about, something to brag about, if you will, because it's no longer the town where the KKK marched down the street, or so I've heard. We have evolved and we have been educated and Mayor Garola is the manifestation of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Cod. I've lived here my whole life and I want to let it be known that I am a heterosexual female. And when I was fifteen, I witnessed my good friends be made fun of for what they were and I was too afraid to speak up then. I just want to make up for that now. And I'm going to read a letter from someone who couldn't be here tonight and I agree wholeheartedly with what it says. Dear Mayor Garola, Vice Mayor McCracken and Council Members Hamilton, Ward and Shelton, I am writing to ask you, writing to ask you to uphold and support the Porterville LGBT Pride Proclamation. While LGBT people do not need your support to be proud of who they are, nor to celebrate the beautiful diversity that the LGBT people bring to the human tapestry, Mayor Garola's Pride Proclamation is in alignment with our nation's growing inclusivity and celebration of a group of people who have been discriminated against. Numerous members of your community, gay and straight, young and old, all right then, of diverse ethnic and spiritual backgrounds, have worked hard to help Porterville become a city recognized for inclusivity and respect for, for human diversity and rightly deserve the mayor's proclamation. These volunteers' efforts and Mayor Garola's proclamation should be applauded and not dismissed. Porterville can be a city that tolerates differences or one that respects and honors them. Rescinding this proclamation is like rescinding an olive branch offered to a historically shunned group. Rescinding this proclamation is a step backwards. And for all the LGBT people who face discrimination in your community, this proclamation is a beacon of acceptance and hope and that they belong in our equal Porterville citizens. I hope you will support the LGBT Pride Proclamation and celebrate equality for all. And this is sincerely from Davina Kotolsky, a PhD psychologist, author and LGBT rights advocate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Catherine DeBor. I am a resident of Terabilla but have been through the public school system of Porterville my entire life. Mayor Garola, we've had our differences while you were at a different position at Porterville College, but I'm here today to say that I am very proud that you have made the proclamation that you have and I hope you stay brave and keep the proclamation. The gay community- that you have, and I hope you stay brave and keep the proclamation. The gay community, I have friends, I have a very close friend that I consider as my brother. He has been kicked out of his home because of who he is. His mother has yet to actually tell his father that he is gay. And he has been fortunate to find someone that can live with him and be a companion with him. I have always been there for him. And by making this proclamation is just an awareness of that there are gay people in the community, there are straight people here in the community that support them, I am one of them. And by passing this proclamation, like I said, is just, uh, um, a, uh, gosh, what's the word?
Okay.
Affirmation.
A visual, to say, here who we are. We have them every single month, we have it for Single Day Mile, we have it for May, we have it for, uh, Valentine's Day, we have all these celebrations of specific people, specific things. May is Huntington's Awareness Month. I have yet to see this town to show any type of support for that. My family has that history. By rescinding this proclamation, you are killing an awareness that needs to be made and to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Duncan, and I am a resident of Porterville. Not everybody in this town is a Christian, and, um, the Christian values that this town supposedly has is showing, is not showing the love that is supposed to be found in the Bible and found in God. I believe in God, and I believe that it's about love. And I haven't heard a whole lot of that today. I'm asking that you not take away the proclamation, thank you for doing it in the first place. I'm a teacher in this town, and I have a lot of gay students. And by taking this away, you're telling them that they're not good enough, and that they are not worthy. And that's just the first step of all of the teenage suicide that comes along with being gay. So, please don't tell our students that they're not worth it, because they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Lisa Marie Smith, and I'm a lifelong resident of Porterville. I request to have items seventeen and eighteen pulled from the consent calendar for open discussion as they are not routine. I understand that you guys are discussing the regulations for proclamations, and that's fine, however, even if you change the regulations for proclamations, you cannot go back and ex post facto rescind a proclamation. The proclamation was done within the scope of the current rules. It is a waste of time to be discussing this tonight. I am a proud Christian, I'm a Sunday school teacher, and I don't understand why my seven-year-old students can grasp the concept of loving each other and treating each others as equals while the rest of Porterville cannot. I can quote scripture with the rest of them, John thirteen thirty-four, "A new commandment I give to you, that you love one another, just as I have loved you, you are also to love one another." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jessica Mahoney, long, long resident of Porterville. I too request that seventeen, eighteen be pulled from the consent calendar for public discussion, because they're not routine items. For some people that don't know, proclamations is not something the mayor developed or wrote. Citizens write proclamations every day. But individual staff, city staff, anybody can write a proclamation. It's online, you can come and pick up the form here at City Hall. All the mayor does is sign it, and if so choose, the city council can also sign it with her. We do proclamations all the time. I've been coming to city councils for over five years now. We've done proclamations to honor country bands, Iris Day, you name it, people, individual events, anything. I believe in the separation of church and state. It's just really disheartening, the last city council meeting, the things I heard. You'd think after five years I would be used to it, because it's kind of a repeat. But the plain disrespect they had for a mayor is this, it's, it's this, it's, it's not right. For people to have their personal religious beliefs, you can have them, but when you represent and take oath of office, you raise your hand and you take that oath to uphold the Constitution for all people, regardless of what your personal religious beliefs are. You gotta realize, we're here, we're not going nowhere. We work here, we, we're gonna be some of your children someday, like it or not, we're here. But the plain disregard of, 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 you know, people can have their opinions, but they're not facts, they're your opinions. They're, you can come up here and state, you know, the sky's blue and someone's gonna say it's purple, you know? It's, this is just, this, it doesn't make no sense. If you read the city charter, the mayor has all cerebral, cerebral, ceremony issues and patriarchal duties, the mayor has sole authority. Now, unless you want to change a city charter for something that's not really city business per se, that has no legal standing, is this silly. It's, it's silly. If you know, and you come to city council meetings, not just for these big shows, but if you show up and be involved in, in the civic part of the city council, you'll realize the proclamations are done kind of before the meeting actually gets started, before any city business really happens. So, I just suggest people just, you know, we're real proud on this literacy program, let's read a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Rosanna Soto, and I am a Porterville resident. I have been my whole life.
Can you bring the mic up just a little, please?
Raise your mic just a little, there you go.
Thank you.
I request that items seventeen and eighteen be pulled from the calendar for public discussion and is, is not routine. I'll start by thanking you, Madam Mayor, for taking the first step and having the courage to do something about having equal rights. Change is never easy, the unknown is scary, but as a woman of God, you made a decision based on what is right and equal, and simply because you care. You've seen the suffering, it is real. It happens every day. No living being deserves that. I am a survivor, I am a survival, survivor of sexual abuse, and I can tell you that all three of my abusers were heterosexual. And for anyone to imply that sexual abuse is a result of homosexuality is completely false, embarrassing, and beyond ridiculous. Straight Americans need an education of heart and soul. They must understand, to begin with, how it can feel to spend years denying your own deepest truths, to sit silently through classes, meals, church services, while people you love toss off remarks that brutalize your soul. War, rape, murder, poverty, famine, civil and equal rights for all are worldwide issues and national issues as well. But are we really more concerned about who I love than what the real problems are? I am your daughter, I am your sister, I am your friend, an aunt and a cousin, I am human. It seriously blows my mind that strangers, people who know nothing of me or who I am and what I stand for willingly inflict such hate and prejudice onto humans simply because they are different. Yes, I am different, but I am different because my Creator has made it so. Americans seem to forget, no single person in this country besides Native Americans were native. Innocent Native American women, men, and children were slaughtered, and then their land was claimed. Murder, rape, torture, theft, are what this land was built on. That is hypocrisy. We are what we build. We are, we as a country can be great. I will pray for all of those that when we meet, our God does not punish you for not knowing better. Love is love, God is nothing but love. Stop disguising the message of hate with our God. It is simple, He created me. If He wanted me to be someone else, He would have done so. In fact, this moment here, it is part of His plan. I was here to let you know that He loves me. He loves me because not only does it say it in the Bible, but He has saved me Himself. Our paths have collided because He has willed it.
Time's expired.
Sorry, time's, uh, thank you. Thank you. We have about five more minutes, and so, the next.
Two.
Hi, my name is Teresa Carpenter, I am from Porterville, that's my sister. I wanted to rescind seventeen and eighteen, that's as far as I remember. I'm just a mom, I'm straight. There are people here that I love and I are very close to. And I, this is horrible, the rescinding, um, and it's not so much because of them. I have a son who has CP and, um, has a very, he's filled with God. And I have another son, um, who grows his hair long to donate it to cancer patients. And, um, because he does this, other children call him gay. They have actually threatened to jump my son, and he's not gay. And I have to explain to him, wha, where did this ignorance come from? And this comes from somewhere. A child is not born hateful, it is taught, it comes from somewhere. And making this proclamation go through, it does mean more to someone like me too. I don't have to be gay for it to mean a lot, I just have to love somebody who's gay, and love my child enough to want him to be the best person he can, and he is an awesome child. And I have just tried to fill my kids with love, and it's very hard, because there are children out there that parents don't realize what they say and how it affects them, and when they enter the schools, they get it all confused, and they're walking up to children, no child deserves this, whether they're gay or not, it, it, the ignorance is so deep that they see this boy with long hair and they're like, "Well, you must be gay, you have long hair, we're going to jump you." That's hate, that's a hate, I don't, I don't know how, any other way to put it, but I have to explain this to my child, and then we come in here and I have to explain why church-going people, I go to church too, why church-going people are saying things that doesn't sound much like church-going people. I, I have nothing more, but if you look around, a lot of these people here that are wearing our little flags, that's your youth, and that's your youth speaking. Take a look at them, because they're your future voter, voters, but they're also Porterville's future. Tell them it's okay to be part of this future. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one more, and we will close the oral communications.
Good evening, Mayor Garola and council members. My name is Karen Bishop, I'm a longtime resident of Porterville, I'm also a wife and a mother, and a member of the American Sociological Association. I'm a professor of sociology, I've been teaching about gender, sexuality, and families for over twenty years, at institutions like the University of Connecticut, University of Hartford, as well as our own Porterville College. I'm here to tell you that the myths that, uh, some of our residents have repeated tonight have long been debunked. Twenty decades and decades of research by experts in disciplines in virtually all the social and behavioral sciences have disproven that information over and over again, and yet it continues to be repeated. And the problem with this isn't just that people embrace this misinformation, but what I see as the major issue for us in a democracy is when misinformation like this is used to create public policy. And this is what I want you to consider tonight. You're here tonight, obviously, as members of our community, we're all members of this community, and you each have your own heartfelt beliefs and values and perspectives, but you're also here to represent all of us. And, and all of us means all of us. So, what people need is community, and this proclamation that was signed and presented at the last meeting was a symbol of that community. It was a moment of recognizing that our community isn't just made up of people like each of us individually, but it's made up of all of us, and, and people who are different than we are. And when we listen to people whose varying perspectives are, you know, divergent from our own, and we reflect on those, it gives us an opportunity to grow and evolve as a community and as a society. And that's sometimes where the best social change takes place, you know, so conflict is inevitable. But when we consider that conflict, and when we respectfully recognize those perspectives and try to find resolution, that's when we find the best social progress takes place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wish to thank everybody who came forward on both sides and...
Do you have forty seconds left?
Uh, no, I think we are up on time, right?
Yep, we're, we're three minutes over the thirty minutes.
So, we're over, so, thank you. I'm sorry, but the time, the time is up, the time is up, so, thank you, thank you.